Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the November seventeenth, two thousand and twenty-one meeting of the Gatesburg Planning Commission. Hope everyone is doing well this evening. Everybody looks well, so we'll go with that. First up is the, we don't have minutes tonight, but we do have a record plat agenda. Greg, do you want to set that up?
Yeah, sure. We have one record plat for tonight for the planning commission's consideration. It's RP-eight-one-seven-three-dash-two-zero-nineteen. It's for the Spectrum at Watkins Mill. It's been reviewed by staff and is ready for the planning commission's approval. I will note one thing, though. We did notice after we posted the packet that the owner's information on the plat was incorrect, but it shouldn't change anything substantial about the plat. And we'll get that resolved before it gets signed by the chair.
Okay, great. And this is a result of the new plan for Spectrum that we looked at a couple of weeks ago?
This is just related to some changes of the lots, subdivision, some of the lot lines for their use. It's over by where Firebirds is and the Starbucks building.
Okay, great. Thanks. Any questions from the commission? All right, is there a motion, please?
Kevin, I move that we accept the record plat as read into the record.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Commissioner Kaufman.
Aye.
Commissioner Wessel.
Aye.
Commissioner Hopkins.
Aye.
Commissioner Winborn.
Aye.
And I'll vote aye as well. That passes unanimously. We have a consent agenda tonight, and there's one item on that, and that's for AFP-nine-zero-eight-one-dash-two-zero-twenty-one, one thousand twenty-nine square foot fixed canopy addition for year-round outdoor dining at two thirty-nine Spectrum Avenue in the MXD Mixed Use Development Zone. And this would make it an amendment to final site plan. Are there any questions on the consent agenda? No? All right. Is there a motion, please?
Mr. Chair, I move we approve the consent agenda as presented this evening.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Commissioner Winborn.
Aye.
Commissioner Hopkins.
Aye.
Commissioner Wessel.
Aye.
Commissioner Kaufman.
Aye.
And I'll vote aye as well. Thank you very much for that. And that takes us now to recommendations to the mayor and city council. And we have one of those this evening for SDP-nine-zero-zero-three-dash-two-zero-twenty-one Nova Vax Campus containing six hundred and four thousand nine hundred twenty-nine square feet of lab, office, research, and development, and integrated light manufacturing in multiple buildings and associated parking, located at fourteen First Field Road in the MXD Mixed Use Development Zone. And this is the recommendation to Mayor City Council, and it looks like Sam Copeland is doing the presentation. Good evening, Sam.
Good evening, everyone. Tech team, please turn to packet page number twenty-three. All right. So, good evening, commissioners. This is a recommendation to the mayor and city council for a systematic development plan application, The staff presentation this evening will focus on the public hearing discussion, the applicant's responses to these comments, and a recap of the proposal. Next slide, please. So the subject property shown on the monitor is a nine-point-six-six-acre MXD-zone site that is generally bounded by Bang Street to the north and First Field Road to the west. Next slide, please. The applicant, Fourteen First Field Holdings LLC, filed an SDP application on August fifth, two thousand and twenty-one, requesting approval for the construction of a new campus for Nova Vax. The application is in performance with the recently approved sketch plan, SK-eight-eight-one-three-dash-two-zero-twenty-one. Specifically, the application proposes six hundred four thousand nine hundred twenty-nine square feet of lab office, research and development, and integrated light manufacturing. As part of the application, the applicant is requesting the approval of a one-per-six-hundred-fifty parking ratio. Exhibit number sixty-three explains that one-third of Nova Vax employees will work on campus full-time, one-third will have a hybrid schedule, and the one-third will work remotely. A joint public hearing for this application was held on October eighteenth, two thousand and twenty-one, and three members of the public provided testimony during the course of the public hearing. The planning commission held its record open until five P M. on November tenth, two thousand and twenty-one. In addition to the testimony provided during the joint public hearing, testimony in the form of two emails has been received and are included in the record as exhibit sixty-one and eighty-six. There are currently eighty-six exhibits in the record. Next slide, please. A majority of the discussion topics were addressed by the applicant during the October eighteenth public hearing, including street security, the importance of a loading dock management plan, stormwater questions, and the project timeline. Topics that were not addressed by the applicant during the course of the public hearing were addressed in the supplemental response letter that has been added as exhibit number sixty-three. One discussion point was the intersection of Street A and Bang Street. The applicant has continuously worked with planning and department full of works to ensure that the interim condition is safe. Street A has been designed to be a right-in, right-out street to minimize conflict points. Another discussion point was ensuring that the plantings using the landscape plan would be native species to benefit pollinators. The applicant's response is that the design guidelines include listed native plant species that will be used in the final landscape plan. Lastly, the applicant looked into a comment to provide shuttle bus service between the campus and nearby transit centers for employees who do not drive. The applicant will revisit this question during the time of final site plan, because at this time, the applicant will have a better understanding of their employees' home locations, commuting patterns, and transit. Staff finds that the applicant adequately addressed the remaining discussion points with the supplemental response letter in exhibit number sixteen-three. Next slide, please. All other aspects of the application remain unchanged. The project includes three structures, the two office-lab buildings front First Field Road. Parking for the project would be accommodated with a new six-story parking structure, which has minimal frontage along Main Street. All proposed streets will remain private and are in performance with the city's road code. Next slide, please. Thirty-five percent of the property will be green area, which exceeds the MXD zoning requirements of twenty-five percent. As shown on the screen, the design guidelines visually depict the use of space. Of note, the project includes a central green area that serves as the focal point of the campus with buildings located on all four sides. Next slide, please. The applicant's elevations demonstrate how the campus buildings would be clad with colored glass, white brick, and perforated metal panels. White brick is a common building material of the Nova Vax Building at seven hundred Prince Orchard Road, which is adjacent to the subject property. All the proposed materials are permitted within the applicant's design guidelines. Additionally, a pedestrian bridge is proposed to connect the two buildings. Next slide, please. The parking garage will utilize patterned concrete and planting beds to enhance the elevations. As shown on the lower image, the parking garage has minimal frontage along Main Street to minimize the visual impact. Next slide, please. Staff is supportive of the subject SDP-nine-zero-zero-three-dash-two-zero-twenty-one application. The ability to retain and grow a Batesville Company Nova Vax, which is at the forefront in the battle against the current global pandemic, reflects a concerted state, county, and city effort. The proposed global biotech campus fulfills the true intent of the master plan for this area and addresses many more city policy priorities and growth sector projections. The applicant has proposed a sustainable, attractive, and well-thought-out development that will remain an asset for the city over the long term. I am happy to answer any questions. Thank you.
Thanks, Sam. Commissioner, is anything, and by the way, our record is closed, so we're really just questions for clarification, and then shortly we'll move on to a motion, but commissioners, any questions?
Sam, can you amplify a little bit on the security concerns that were raised and how that was handled over the last couple of weeks?
Yeah, I can help you with that. So, exhibit number sixty-three identified that during the final site plan process, the applicant will be implementing haulers along the shared street to help make sure that cars are not driving into the quad area unintentionally. They also noted that at this time, they are not proposing to gate any of the streets, so there's no additional gates in that regard.
Thank you, Sam. That was my concern a couple of weeks ago, and I appreciate that. That's good.
Any other questions? Can't see nobody.
Oh, well, yeah. Not a question as much as sort of an ongoing concern, which is just the loading dock off of Bank Street and and then the walk path that understandably is not in front of the garage, but has to cross that internal street and then walk down in front of the bank to cross the road that it just needs more celebration. So right now, it's sort of a perfunctory, what I'll call a perfunctory sort of connection at a curb buildout to get across that road and then a sidewalk down the street on the other side, which is great, and it's, you know, one crossing across that road. It's on the right side, correct side. And I think it all kind of works, Sam, but we ought to be, you know, as we get into final site plans, we ought to be looking at how to celebrate that pedestrian connection and meaning really sort of, you know, patterned roads, road crossings, better lighting, you know, an upgraded encouraged, you know, pedestrian path that leads folks from the green all the way over to the retail. And then, you know, I think the loading off of Bank, you know, I'm a big fan of urban loading conditions, but at some point, you are just creating a problem and not not creating the best possible solution. So I don't know where this is, but it's going to be something we're going to need to study a little bit better about, you know, I didn't, you know, just from a traffic study standpoint, you know, what's the danger of a truck backing up on Bank Street to get into that loading dock? And is it, you know, the best place in the site for it and or is there something else that we need to do, a pull-off, a lay-by there, something else, you know? There's other options there on that roadway that might be able to, might be able to adjust it or mollify it just a bit, so.
So Matt, I think it's an excellent point, and the question, I think, at this stage is the gesture that that's where it will happen, which is Bank Street. Is that more appropriate than First Field or Quince Orchard? And I have a suspicion the answer is yes. So at this, at this scale, that would be that, you know, they're kind of in the right direction, but you bring up great points about the detailing that would be worked out on the way to, on the way to site plan.
And I think that same, that same sort of diagrammatic analysis, John, so the pedestrian pathway could cross the street instead of having to go down the front of the, of the garage, so to get that consolidating everybody into one sidewalk, I think is a good idea. We just got to sort of, in final site plan, we got to really focus on it and make it, make sure it's, you know, people want to walk down it regardless of whether they're going to retail or not.
Well, the implication from the level of detail shown in this package is that they're probably getting pretty close already on figuring out that out. So it's not, it's not unreasonable to shine some light on it. Yeah, good, good point. And I'd add too, given, again, this sort of idea, the scale of this, this, this project and at this phase of the planning, I have to really acknowledge and appreciate the way they treated the buildings themselves. You know, a lesser, I'll say lesser, but in too many situations, this would have looked like one big monolithic block of a building, just to completely max out the the square footage and the skim-to-volume ratios and all the other things that kind of go into into figuring out how to make a cheap box. And they've done just an extraordinary job of making this building interesting and scaled to a, to an area that's not about big block skyscraper kind of stuff. And I have to really just acknowledge that with with all the things we've talked about, that that gesture alone, I think, makes us, makes us a project that's in a tier, tieral by itself.
It's a great point, John. I'll, I'll just double down on it and say, you know, that our, our view, you know, nothing to be said about the current company making this application, but, you know, our view should be thirty, forty, fifty years in the built environment in the city, you know, planning world and, you know, building more white elephant giant buildings is, is a real problem, something that, you know, you know, given the optimism around a current use could be a great product to bring into the city, but understanding that companies don't last forever and or they move and or they, you know, consolidate or whatever it is, you know, that happens, and then we're left with the, the large, you know, you know, construction of some sort that isn't usable for anything else or much else. And this is actually a building that will be Class A office, you know, regardless of who's in it. So this is a great product to sit down here. It happens to have a good company in it, but it, you know, it has, it is a great product to sit in the city and will have a long life regardless of, you know, where this particular applicant, you know, ends up in the future. So it's a good addition.
All right, commissioners, anything else? Danny, please.
Yeah. How you doing, Sam? Can, can you talk to us a little bit about like the through streets around this, this property? I mean, I guess right now is Bank Street, First Field Road, Quince Orchard Boulevard. Um, that makes like a gigantic, like square around this whole area, but talk about some of the through streets that are going to be in the new cluster of buildings.
Sure. Tech team, if you could please turn to packet page number seventy-eight. Let's see, if we could please turn to packet page number seventy-eight. Cool, thank you. So I'll bring up packet pages seventy-eight and seventy-nine. On this page, you can see that this is the southern portion of the lot. You can see that you've got Private Street B that runs from First Field Road, and then it goes to an already built portion that connects to Quince Orchard. You can also see Private Street A along the bottom street or along the bottom of the screen. And then you can see Private Street C, which will be a shared street and part of a commercial service road that would connect First Field Road with Private Street A. And then, if you could turn to packet page number seventy-nine. And this will just show you the other portion of it. You've got Private Street A along the bottom. You've got Bank Street, First Field, and then Private Street C.
Okay. And, um, just, just, just a question, but is there any thought about, you know, and I'm not even sure that it may be needed, but any, any, I mean, because I'm just wondering about if there will be like any traffic calming measures, you know, in this perimeter?
Are you talking about along Bank Street and First Field?
I'm thinking about, I'm thinking about private, some of the, the private street because it makes like a, you know, it goes to Bank Street, but and I know it doesn't go all the way over to Quince Orchard Boulevard, but um, I'm just wondering about like access and egress and, you know, turning in, because I think on the Bank Street side, of course, you're, it's a right-out only, of course. And then I'm just wondering about the left turn in. Because I guess there's going to be more, a lot more traffic than there is now. Absolutely. Because right now it's just a big wide-open field. And the only thing there is, is a bank on the, on the corner of Quince Orchard Road and Bank Street, I think.
So Danny, what is your, what would be the, just a couple of scenarios that would concern you?
Well, I know there's like on the other side, there's, you know, McDonald's, and there's like a whole bunch of other little, little buildings, you know, little, um, there's a Staples there and some other buildings. And I'm just wondering, it's just going to get a little busy over there. And I'm just wondering about the traffic that, that may be generated. I'm just thinking a little ahead, you know, because I don't live that far from here. And I think there'll be, you know, it'll generate a little more traffic, and I'm just wondering what thought has gone into that.
Sure. So I can speak to a few of those comments and concerns. The first is, when you're looking at this current page, you'll see that Private Street A is currently going straight into Bang Street. According to the applicant, this is a temporary condition, because it will eventually line up better with the actual intersection with McDonald's, with Staples. So this is a temporary condition. It will be straightened out at some point in the future. To your regards about the traffic impact, they've already been approved for a traffic impact analysis, which is already been approved. And in terms of traffic management and the speeds, they've selected commercial service roads and shared streets as a type of road. So we're not talking really wide roads here. Pretty quickly, we're talking about, I believe it's, well, it's ten or eleven feet for each lane. I don't have the numbers in front of me, but we're talking about relatively narrow traffic lanes. So cars won't be able to speed down these because there's not a lot of room, and the driver probably wouldn't be feeling super safe with high speeds in a close environment.
Right. I mean, I guess, and I guess the width of the, the lanes will help with the traffic calming. And the reason I ask is right now people are, I mean, folks, they were doing some like truck, truck, like some, some of the truck, you know, instruction, you know, businesses were going in there and, and, you know, training folks with, you know, with trucks, and then there was some motorcycles. I know that'll change. I understand that. But it just kind of makes me wonder how it's going to look when all of this beautiful construction is completed. So, so that, that kind of answers my questions and, and, and what you said about aligning that, that intersection kind of gives me, you know, a little more comfort. So thank you for that.
All right. Yeah, and I think, Danny, to acknowledge your point clearly, any kind of traffic movement that's happening now, leaving the Quince Orchard shopping side of this, where you noted Staples and others are, and if they're used to coming out onto Bank Street, turning left to head toward the signal, there are going to be times during the day when that's not as, not as easily done, but it's not, I don't think it'll end up being a systemic problem because there's a lot of ways in and out of that shopping center, what we're looking for, right? So the good news is at least there's, there's plenty of ways for that to be relieved at any given time, that there might be some congestion at the, at the Bank Street interchange or intersection.
That's true. That's true. Good point.
I think we'd be, I think if there was only one way and one, one way in and out of both of those sites, the Nova Vax site and the, and the shopping center, we'd probably be looking a lot more carefully at how to, how to make sure the road was, was configured differently. But fortunately, it's a secondary access point for the, for the shopping, so it shouldn't, it shouldn't be a bigger, a big impact.
Yeah, that's true, but, but to that point, you know, coming out of that, the, that shopping center, it's a lot easier to get out on that side than get out on a clopper roadside because that gets very busy. And that was sort of my concern, but I think we're, I think we're okay.
Okay, great. All right.
I'll, I'll add, Danny, that internally, in addition to that twenty-two-foot drive aisle, which is, which is constrained and does slow people down, there's, there's parallel parking along, you know, two of the major pieces there, and that, that actually does a great job of slowing people down. I, I feel pretty confident that traffic inside the property will be pretty slow. But to your point, it's that Bank Street end that, that will most likely be where there's some congestion until I think there's some, there's some traffic learning, you know, folks like me that go to that center, I think, will learn to use First Field. So First Field, which is frankly overbuilt for its current use, it's a big street for a few cars, is going to actually pick up some traffic. So you'll, you'll make the right, 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 you know, instead of left, right?
Correct. Not right. Correct.
Correct. Right. And so I'm, I'm, I think, I feel like there's infrastructure behind it that will change the way people exit from the, from the center. They might use that same exit, but they're going to exit differently in a different pattern. And there's lots of infrastructure there. So I, I feel pretty good about it, but it's, I agree with you. It's a concern, but.
Yeah. Okay. Thank you.
Any other comments? Okay. Well, we have a recommendation from staff to move this forward. And Sam, I don't remember if you actually read the recommendation to the record at the end of your presentation. We've been chatting away here so long.
I did not, but I could if you'd like.
Okay, please do. Thank you.
No, staff recommends that the planning commission, based on the evidence and testimony submitted to the record and the findings in the final staff analysis, recommend approval of SDP-nine-zero-zero-three-dash-two-zero-twenty-one to the mayor and city council with the following three conditions.
Oh, okay. We'll just have to read those ourselves.
I can do it, too.
No, no, it's fine. It's fine. You sort of left us hanging there, though.
You're right.
Sorry. Very good. Any questions?
Issue as well, so maybe that was part of it as well.
I'm sorry. Go ahead, Sam.
I'm sorry. I'm having a bit of a connection issue as well, so maybe that was, there was a lag or something.
Okay. Any questions on the recommendation for staff? No? All right. All right. We're ready for a motion, please.
It's chairman, based on the evidence and testimony submitted to the record and the findings in the final staff analysis, move that the planning commission approve SDP-nine-zero-zero-three-dash-two-zero-twenty-
I'm gonna, I'm gonna stop you right there, Lloyd. It's, it's a recommendation of approval to the mayor and council.
I'm sorry. Move that the planning commission recommend approval of SDP-nine-zero-zero-three-two-zero-two-one to the mayor and city council with the three conditions is read into the record.
Second.
All right. It's removed and seconded. Commissioner Kaufman.
Aye.
Commissioner Wessel.
Aye.
Commissioner Hopkins.
Aye.
Commissioner Winborn.
Aye.
And I'll vote aye as well. Thank you very much. That passes unanimously. If the applicant's team is on the, is watching or otherwise listening, good luck. Welcome to the city. This is exciting. All of that stuff that, that, you know, let us know what else we can do to make this, help you make this project happen. All right, very good.
Thank you, Sam.
Thank you.
Thanks, Sam. Nice presentation.
Thank you. Have a good evening.
You, too. All right. That takes us to public hearings, and we have one of those tonight. And before I read it, Chris, are you on yet? No, not yet. Let's wait for Chris Berger to come over from the digital vestibule or whatever they, they call it.
Mr. Chairman, the tech team, trying to get Chris over. Just having a small problem.
Okay. All right, there he is. Good evening, Chris.
Hello.
I, I'm noticing from the agenda, we've got two parts to this, this next, I believe, and you, I assume we're going to do concurrently.
That is correct, yes.
Okay. Why don't you go ahead and read it all in? I won't read it and then have you repeat it. So why don't you go ahead and introduce it, please?
Okay, so our first item is, let me pull up the agenda and get that. My computer's acting slow, but we basically have two items. It's a amendment to concept site plan, which is ASDP ninety-fifty-one, two thousand and twenty-one, and we also have AFP ninety-ninety-six, two thousand and twenty-one. So we'll do them concurrently. If the tech team can pull up page five hundred and thirty-two, please. So the applicant, the Universal Church submitted an amendment to the concept plan application, which I said is ASDP ninety-fifty-one, two thousand and twenty-one, and the AFP, AFP nine-zero-nine-six, two thousand and twenty-one. Subject property is known as the Brown Commercial Property. It is own corridor development. It includes three buildings, one of which is the Goodwill Building. The change of use will occur within the building at eight-nine-four-five Northwestland Drive. The applicant is requesting to convert two thousand square feet of office and retail space to assembly use in order to accommodate the church. The application does not propose any physical changes to either the exterior of the building or the site itself. Staff provided the mayor and council with a courteous review of ASDP ninety-fifty-one, two thousand and twenty-one at its October eighteenth meeting. That night, the council deemed the application to have a minor impact and directed the planning commission to hold the public hearing and make a final decision on the amendment. Therefore, ASDP ninety-fifty-one, two thousand and twenty-one comes before the commission to change the use in accordance with section twenty-four-dash-one-nine-eight-C-two of the city code. If the commission approves the amendment to the concept plan, the amendment to final site plan application, which again is AFP ninety-ninety-six, twenty-twenty-one, will come before the planning commission. The AFP comes before the planning commission according to a section twenty-four-dash-one-six-eight of the city code, which requires planning commission approval for a change of use. The public hearing was duly advertised on October twenty-eighth and November fourth in the Washington Post and has been posted on the city's website since October twenty-seventh. The property also was properly posted with public hearing signs on October twenty-seventh. At present, there are- At present, there are seven exhibits in the record file plus a draft resolution. They are referenced in an exhibit list, which is in the staff report. The exhibits may review during the course of the beating or in the planning and code administration office during regular business hours. At City Hall or on the city's website. Any objections to the receipt of any exhibit should be noted prior to the closing of the record. Otherwise, they will be deemed received into evidence. Tech team, if we can skip ahead three pages to five hundred and thirty-five. The change in use requires the shared parking charts for the brown commercial property to be amended. And this is the updated parking chart provided by the applicant's consultant. They have a hundred and thirty-three parking spaces and the conversion will still have, and after the conversion. It will still have an excess of thirty parking spaces. So finally, if we can go to the next page, please. And this is the site plan with the updated parking chart placed on it. So to summarize, the staff report staff is supportive of both ASDP ninety fifty-one, twenty twenty-one. And AFP ninety ninety-six, twenty twenty-one. The proposed applications comply with the purpose and intent of the corridor development zone. Um, the twenty-two thousand three land use element and the Frederick Avenue master plan in terms of providing a use that is compatible. And similar to existing uses. It also will not have a negative effect on the surrounding area and it will reduce the vacant space within the commercial center. And finally, staff notes that the office use will remain the primary use within the building at eight nine four five Northwestland Drive. So tonight we have three representatives from Universal Life Church joining us. Marlon Santana, Leopoldo Gonzalez, and Antonio Carbalo.
Okay, great. Thanks, Chris. Um, so will you all be doing more of a presentation or are you really just queued up to answer questions?
I believe they're here just to answer any questions.
Okay, fair enough, fair enough. All right, um, so. This is what we're gonna do because we've got this under the agenda as a public hearing. Along with what follows as a site, a scheduled site plan. Um, we will have a public hearing and ask for public testimony, but before we do that, are there any questions from the commissioners about the application? Okay, not seeing any questions. So tech team, um, why don't you go ahead and play the introduction to, uh, public testimony, please?
Good evening. If you've connected to the meeting tonight via Zoom and you're on a desktop or a laptop and you wish to make a public comment. We can't currently see or hear you. What you need to do, please, is wiggle your mouse around and look towards the bottom center of your screen. You should see a raised hand button. Go ahead and click on that now for us, please. Alternatively, if you've connected in via telephone, you can press star nine.
Great, thanks. And I see a hand up from George Winkler, Mr. Winkler, uh, would you, uh, come on over and, um, join us, please? You're on mute. George, if you're speaking.
Can you hear me now?
We, we sure can. Thanks.
Okay, I'm sorry. I was doing what the gentleman asked to do to make sure it was working. I don't have a comment yet.
Oh, okay. Are, are you on for the next, the next application?
Yes, sir, I am. Yeah.
Okay, thanks a lot. No problem. No problem. All right. Uh, and I don't see any other hands up on the attendee side. So, um, and that could still change, but in the meantime. Why don't we then go to the recommendation from staff? Actually, Chris, you gave us the recommendation, didn't you?
I, I just read a staff summary. I can read the recommendations. Staff recommends, I'll read them both. Staff recommends that the planning commission, based on the applicant's testimony. The staff report findings and recommendation approve amendment to concept plan. ASDP ninety fifty-one, twenty twenty-one, and adopt the resolution finding it in compliance with section twenty-four dash one six zero G. Dot seven B and staff recommends that the planning commission, based on the exhibit submitted, the applicant's testimony. And the staff report findings and recommendation. Grant AFP ninety ninety-six, twenty twenty-one, finding it in compliance with sections twenty-four dash one seventy. And twenty-four dash one seventy-two A of the city code.
Perfect. Thanks, Chris. Uh, just a couple of quick questions to clarify. So, um, with a Northwestland address. Um, and, and I'm so used to seeing this building from that side. I hadn't even really considered that it was. Um, a part of the commercial property behind it. Um, but, but having looked at the site plan, that's, that's obvious. And I just want to make sure and make a clarification that using that parking area, that the access to the building from that side on the lower level. From the backside, um, there's no improvements needed to, to. Use the building for the proposed change of use and access and park in the back where the parking field is. Is that right?
That is, there's no exterior improvements. Obviously, they're going to make interior improvements.
Right.
But no exterior improvements.
No, no need for it. The access is good from, from that side and it's, I assume it's in use now that way or it had been in the, in. Prior tenants, yeah. Okay.
Correct, yeah.
Um, and the other thing I wanted to clarify was, um, roughly, it's a two-story building, so. The use, the proposed use, does it, does it already designate whether it's the top floor or bottom floor? I mean, is there, is there any?
Technically, it's a two-story building, but it's on a slope going down towards, um, if you're looking at the map right now, six nineteen. Uh, North Frederick Avenue, that's the Goodwill. So it's a three-level building. So this building is accessed from the parking lot there. It's, it's, uh, you would in, enter the church from the parking lot in the rear. So it's a three-level building. They're occupying the bottom, lower level.
They're in the bottom floor, okay. And, and, and that's, I mean, that's really not necessarily important for this. The use is approved. Would be approved regardless what floor it's on, right? So that doesn't. Yeah, okay. Very good. All right, um, anybody else? Questions, concerns?
Straightforward beneficial to the larger mix, uh, use. That's great.
Yes, indeed. All right, and I don't see any hands going up on the attendee side, so I think we can move on to, um. To our discussion and, um, and recommend a, or excuse me, approval, uh, or motion for approval and, and, uh. On both of them, any concerns at all with the proposed use from, from anyone? I, I don't see any, any reason to be concerned about this at all. Uh, actually quite the opposite, quite happy that there's another layer of use coming into the, into the community and using an already. Very vile building.
I agree.
Okay. Thank you, Danny. All right, so the recommendation from, uh, from staff is for us to approve the change of use for the, for the, um. I think technically it is to, um. Amend the concept plan that allows the use, not a change of view so much. Uh, as well as the site plan. Chris, do you want two separate motions?
Yes, please.
Okay. All right, so, um. Commissioners, there are motion, please, on the amendment to concept plan.
Mr. Chair, I moved that the planning commission, based on the applicant's testimony, the staff report findings and recommendation approve amendment to concept plan. ASDP nine zero five one dash twenty twenty-one and adopt the resolution finding it in compliance with section twenty-four. Dash one sixty D point one zero per N B.
Second.
All right, I think. I had a different reference number. Does it matter?
Yeah, I believe it was, uh, twenty-four dash one sixty G dot seven.
Add to that motion also adopt the draft resolution that was included in the packet.
Okay. Got it. All right, it's, uh, is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded, uh, Commissioner Kaufman. Commissioner Wessel.
I.
Commissioner Hopkins.
Bye.
Commissioner Winborn.
Hi.
And, and although I, I, I'm working with the, uh, the grid right now and it's gonna confuse whoever has to take our notes. Because we're not going in the same order every time. I apologize about that, but I'm, I'm using whoever pops up on the grid first. All right, uh, so that passes unanimously, the, um, the amendment to concept plan. Is there a motion, please, on the amendment to the final plan?
Mr. Chair, I moved that the planning commission, based on the exhibit submitted, the applicant's testimony and the staff reports finding and recommendation. Grant AFP nine zero nine six dash twenty twenty-one, finding it in compliance with, and I hope I get this right this time. Section twenty-four dash one seventy and twenty-four dash one seventy-two A of the city code.
Second.
All right, it's been moved and seconded, um, Commissioner Kaufman. Commissioner Wessel.
I.
Commissioner Hopkins. Uh, you're on mute.
I.
Thank you, Commissioner Winborn.
I.
And although I as well, thank you very much. That passes unanimously, uh, team, uh, from the church and staff. Um, thank you very much for bringing this plan forward. Good luck, um.
Good luck. Welcome to the city.
Yes, indeed. All right, that takes us, that takes us to our second site plan of the evening for SP dash. Nine zero seven five dash twenty twenty-one reapproval. For a six-story mixed-use building at three fifteen East Diamond Avenue in the CBD Central Business District Zone. Uh, again, this is final site plan and a reapproval, uh, and presented from staff is Jasmine Forbes. Good evening, Jasmine.
Good evening.
Oh, you're in the office. Look at that.
And she's gotta drive all the way to Baltimore now.
Um, so staffs before you to present final site plan application SP dash nine seven, I'm sorry, nine zero seven five. Dash twenty twenty-one. The applicants requesting reapproval for a six-story mixed-use building, which includes five stories of multifamily apartments. Eight thousand six hundred and sixty-three square feet of ground floor retail and an associated at three park, uh, level parking garage and technique. Can I have, um, page, um, six oh nine, I'm sorry, six oh three, please? Uh, so as shown on the screen, the subject property is located at three fifteen East Diamond Avenue and is zone CBD. Since his business district. So the application comes for the planning commission in accordance with section twenty-four dash one sixty-eight, which requires the planning commission to grant final site plan approval. Uh, so the original site plan application, um, SP dash, uh, seven eight oh five dash twenty seventeen. Uh, was, uh, for this project was approved by the planning commission on April fourth, twenty eighteen. The planning commission granted a one-year extension, uh, for that site plan, um, on February nineteenth, uh, twenty twenty. Uh, the site plan, um, received a further extension, uh, from the city manager under the authority of the February first, twenty twenty-one. City manager's executive order, uh, due to the COVID pandemic. And unfortunately, that site plan had expired on October fourth of twenty twenty-one, so the applicants coming before the. Uh, planning commission to, uh, seek reapproval of that previously approved, uh, site plan. And since the last time planning commission have seen this, there haven't been really no changes to the site plan or the elevation, but tech team can have the next page, please. And I will have, um, Scott Wallace, the attorney, uh, for the project, uh, to start the presentation this evening.
All right, thanks.
Thank you, Jasmine. Uh, good evening. Uh, I am Scott Wallace with Law Firm of Miles and Stockbridge on behalf of. A and W Gaithersburg LLC, the contract purchaser and developer of the subject property. Uh, we are here tonight, uh, requesting reapproval of the site plan for the mixed-use development project on the property. Which was originally approved by the planning commission in twenty eighteen. As will be detailed by, uh, Mr. Kevin Ash, um, the, uh, president and CEO of Ellisdale Construction, which is the parent company of. The applicant. Uh, when he speaks later, the project team, uh, has worked diligently since the site plan approval. To address, uh, several conditions of the, of the site plan approval. That were precedent and required to be satisfied prior, prior starting, uh, construction. While substantial progress has been made on these conditions. Uh, A and W was not able to proceed with construction before the site plan and the allowed. And available extensions expired. So we are here tonight seeking reapproval to allow adequate time to wrap up the work on the conditions. Of the site plan approvals and begin construction of this very important project in Old Town. Uh, Mr. Ash will, uh, just in this, in a minute, provide a brief overview of the elements and features of the project. But we, uh, note that no changes are proposed to the project as previously approved. I believe most of the commissioners were on the commission at the time of the approval. Mr. Winborn may have been. In the, in the wings, uh, that night, I'm not sure, but, um, hopefully, uh, you remember. Are familiar with what was being proposed, as I said, Mr. Ash will refresh your recollection. Uh, also provides details as to the, the efforts that have been made to get the project going and then will be available to answer any questions. So with. Turn it over to Mr. Ash, to Kevin Ash, and.
Good evening, everyone. Uh, thanks very much for the opportunity to present again, um, obviously. Uh, with leadership of, uh, Jasmine, uh, we've, we've been trudging along and, and, and making a lot of progress. Um, some of the, the, the big progress that's been made is, is the final, uh, plan and relocation of the Bud Car. Um, you know, uh, A and W Gaithersburg and the city and, uh, and the civil engineers worked, uh, you know. Together to, to figure out a final plan for that, that's moved forward. Um, uh, I've also worked with, um, the city, city historic staff on, on identifying. Uh, some elevations that, uh, that are gonna get improved and, and come before you again, uh, from the parking garage standpoint. But all in all, this is the, the, the same plan that, uh, that we got approved years ago. Uh, still looking to move forward with this, uh, project of a hundred nine, um, apartment units with, uh, about eighty-five hundred square feet of retail. Um, the project, uh, since it originally came before you was, uh, has been changed to fifty percent affordable and fifty percent market rate. Which is, uh, is great for the city and, um, you know, with, with any tight urban infill project. There's a lot of, uh, a lot of coordination and detailing with, with neighbors. Been working diligently with, uh, Mr. Winkler over the last year and a half, coordinating, uh, his property line and working with CSX. Uh, a component, um, to, with CSX is a private communication line, uh, that we had to locate and, uh. Coordinate our foundation around that private communication line. So, um, we, we are very close. But unfortunately ran out of time with that COVID extension, so that's what brings us, uh, in, in front of you now. Um, but, uh, uh, as the staff could point out, we're, we've made a lot of headway on the conditions and are narrowing down on the last few conditions. Uh, left to finalize.
Okay. Um, i- if you don't mind, I, I, I would be curious to know which of the conditions are still, still left to be resolved and maybe what, what's ahead of you to get those, those resolved?
Um, I'm, I'm pulling from memory, um. Uh, we, we were, we just received, um. Uh, a, approval of, from, um, Mr. George Winkler, uh, the neighboring property for his, uh, access acceptance. Just recently, so the last two, I think we're working on Jasmine is, uh, final CSX approval and, um. Final power plan approvals from Pepco. I think those are the only two.
That's correct. And also, um, staff is still, um, currently reviewing some agreements that the applicant has had with the city, you know, with the, uh, the storm drain and the sidewalk. Access easement, so those drafts are in and staff are currently reviewing those and those should be executed, um, soon. By those conditions.
I was gonna say, yeah, I believe we've gotten comments and I thought addressed them on the, um. Various cross easements with the city. I think we've taken care of that. The pla- the properties actually also been, uh, recorded as a plat, a record plat for the property was, uh, also done. Um, so we're again down to just a couple, um, remaining elements and, or items.
Okay, and so with resolution of those items, does that mean you pull the trigger on, on final permit documents? Are you already filed or ready to go once?
We have, we have, uh, architectural and building approval. Um, there's one, uh, component that, uh, we're trying to clear up. Um, the, the garage, uh, has about eighteen parking spaces that have, um. Uh, the, the structural columns that are in conflicting, uh, in conflict with the depth of the parking spaces. So shortly, um, we actually have a, a resolution in front of staff to get a waiver. Um, for those eighteen parking spaces, for the depth of those parking spaces, which is consistent with other parking, uh, garages, um. In the city, so we do have to resolve that.
So no crystal ball on, on the, on the conditions being resolved, but on the, at the moment that those are resolved, whatever, whenever that happens. Let's say it's in a week or in six months, whatever that is, um, does that mean you're really ready to start construction shortly thereafter?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay. Um, we, and, and what I'm really driving at is, you know, I, I'm not sure, we, we're gonna hear from the public on this, but. You know, one-year extension and it does, is it, is it likely to need another, other year or is this, is this really? Reasonably to, reasonable to expect it's gonna start to happen this year?
I, I, I would, I would agree that, yeah, within the year it would start.
Okay, great. All right, commissioners, any other questions before we go to the public?
I have one, you know, question and it's, it's more around the, the plans for. The, uh. The impact on the neighbors and, and I brought this up to, uh, John, selecting at one of our other meetings. You know, since. You know, since the last time this plan was reviewed, there have been happily additional businesses that have occupied space in the neighboring property, um specifically restaurant uses, which at peak times in the evening, fill the parking lot that's about to turn into a construction site with with people. And and I know there are accommodations being considered for other spaces within Old Town Gaithersburg, which uh it's great that those spaces are available, but they're also much less convenient than than the the convenient parking lot uh right next door. So from the time that you start construction to the time that the garage is is constructed and available for people to use, what are the plans to mitigate impacts on those businesses that have a a high volume of traffic, especially peak uh evening and weekend hours?
Well, I believe that the city uh has retained um fifty parking spaces across the street um for those uh additional businesses there. Um, it's going to take us about eighteen months to complete the garage and uh we do have the first floors is shared parking. Um, so when that, when that opens, so there will be some inconvenience during those eighteen months. Um, but there are about fifty spaces in the parking garage at three seventy uh Diamond Ave that are uh allowed to be used.
But so i- as as far as the applicant's team is concerned, you guys aren't providing anything as far as, you know, improved signage, improvements to lighting, improvements to pathways, uh you know, low hanging fruit to make sure that people who who are coming to one of the adjacent businesses know where to park and know that it's not, you know, an insurmountable walk to get from the city garage to where they want to have a beer and and have dinner.
I'm during, uh, I'm, I guess I'm, I'm dur- you mean during construction?
During construction.
Um, we, well, we have a traffic and transportation plan and a phasing plan um for for impacts during construction. Um, but nothing uh as from from a signage standpoint to other parking spaces.
But n- n- nothing from a pedestrian standpoint, you know, uh, eh, this is, this is a little bit of a a no man's land of an issue because it's, it is not something that is, that I would expect to be a hundred percent your problem. Um, but on the other hand, it it is a, it is definitely going to be a negative impact to the freshly established businesses in this area. Um.
I mean, I
established with that parking place and and it's, it's not a long term issue. It's the eighteen months during construction, but in the restaurant world, eighteen months during construction is an eternity.
Commissioner Wester, are you, are you thinking that it's mainly pedestrian, redirecting a pedestrian? I, or a vehicle that was thought they could park there, but can't, what are they?
You know, people are out looking for, you know, going somewhere for dinner. They think they're going to South House Garden and they're gonna, they're used to parking in this parking lot. Well, it's going to be marked off and full of a construction site. What do you do? You go to the city garage? Well, how do you get there if you don't know that that's where you're supposed to park because you're headed down Diamond Avenue in one direction or the other? Eh, my concern is people are going to give up and say the heck with it. I'm going to go somewhere else. And I would imagine, I don't know, I certainly haven't spoken to the the proprietors of that restaurant. I would imagine um that they would be pretty concerned about that themselves. Um.
So what do you think? Do you think signage like up on the construction fence of um uh parking, you know, give the address, uh, you know, of parking for maybe the city garage or or two, you know, additional parking located here and here?
Yeah, I I think it's, I think it frankly is is a shared effort. I think it's a combination of things, signage like that, you know, parking during construction, free city garage that way. And then it's the the path, I don't know if anybody's ever tried to walk the path from parking in that garage, coming out and finding your way to this site. It's certainly there, but it's not, if you haven't walked it, it's not apparent, right? It's not necessarily well lit. It's a meandering path through a couple of different ways. So it's yeah, I'm not suggesting this is all all your problem. I think it's a, it's a joint effort between the city and 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 you guys. Um, I just want to make sure that there is a plan.
Yes, I do want to note that during this uh during a project, they are required to provide a maintenance of traffic plan with their site development permit to know which roads are being uh blocked off and traffic circulation. So um before a site permit gets issued for this project, they, the project team have to sit with city staff pre-con- have pre-construction meetings and discuss, you know, what roads are being shut off, um, what sidewalks are being blocked, and you know, some the signage to direct them.
Yeah, we recently got that plan approved, but I mean, I don't mind adding signage on the construction fencing to help uh patrons locate the other public garages. I think
That would be helpful. Did did I hear you write though that you have secured some temporary parking access across diamond in the in the garage that's connected to the?
The city. I did want to address that. Uh, the city actually um secured parking in the Gaithersburg Station Parking Garage, fifty spaces that will be public parking. And um we can work with Kevin on suitable signage to make sure people are aware of that.
Uh, apologies, John. When you gave us that update on the last time, I thought you were referring to the city owned garage down across from from the post office.
Well, the city owned garage is important, but um the fifty spaces, the fifty additional spaces are in Gaithersburg Station across the street.
That that's a whole nother ballgame and a much better solution. It's sorry, that that was, that was my mis- my total misunderstanding.
Yeah, directly across the street.
Yeah, fabulous solution. And I, as long
Or in, or in the words of Emily Latella, never mind.
But I think, I think your point is 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 well taken, Phil, that uh, you know, we should have, you know, like an address or 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 something so that people know that if they became accustomed to parking there, that it's just across the street and they gotta go around the block.
Yeah.
You guys can work with staff on that. It might, it might look like a little map, a little bit of arrows, a little bit of whatever needs to happen to get get people smart about it. Yep. All right. Well, good comment. Nevertheless, Phil, even if you were a little bit
Off in the weeds.
All right. Any other questions for the applicant before we go to a public uh comment? No. All right. I know George Winkler had his hand up and if you want to go ahead and move him over and I'll also look for, actually, while you're doing that, um tech team, if you go ahead and play again, the um uh instructions for testimony, that would be, that'd be helpful. Thank you.
Good evening. If you've connected to the meeting tonight via Zoom and you're on a desktop or a laptop and you wish to make a public comment, we can't currently see or hear you. What you need to do, please, is wiggle your mouse around and look towards the bottom center of your screen. You should see a raise hand button. Go ahead and click on that now for us, please. Alternatively, if you've connected in via telephone, you can press star nine.
Great, thanks. Um, and go ahead and um cue up George Winkler, please.
Yes. Uh, can you hear me now, guys?
We sure can. Good evening. Thanks for joining us.
Good evening. Yeah, thanks for uh, let me join in here. Um, we did reach an agreement on, I I have, I have a few things that I that I'd like to to address here. We did, we did reach an agreement with Kevin on the uh on a parking. But to learn that the parking garage, the parking garage is going to change is concerning. Um, we need to know what those changes are going to be because we've, we've secured fifteen parking spaces in there for our, our, our tenants. But if he's gonna lose fifteen, um, I mean, then now if we're talking another eighteen, that's concerning. Um, the one thing I also want to bring up is on, on uh staff's comments, number seven. It talks about if there's underground utilities, then things will ha- then they, I I I lost my screen, guys, so I can't. Um, um, can't see it right now. But what it's saying is, is, and on staff comment number seven, if the um the adjustments may be done to layout utilities, other scope for city and regulations. Well, there is a problem because if you go to exhibit eleven, it is still showing the concrete post and it's showing you the the utility lines underneath the boardwalk. He have it listed as electrical. But that is the, that is the fiber optic line coming from DC out of the White House. And the reason I know this, because I've actually dug down to it. And this can be located very easily if they dig down four feet with it, with they, one of their uh C S X folks there. So there's a whole, th- this, this whole thing is not even close to being resolved as far as what uh the utilities are. I'm, I'm sorry, I'm jumping around a little bit. I'm trying to cover everything. So I think that really needs to be addressed. Before you do any kind of warp, any more approvals on this thing because that is, that 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 ALTA survey shows that electric line under the boardwalk, but yet nothing's been addressed about it. And if that's what the parking garage changed is, then I think you need to know about it before you approve any plans. Secondly, the impact of this building will, will totally hurt our tenants. We will lose the church, which use that parking on Sundays and the restaurant. I don't know how they're going to survive. Um, it's it's plain and simple. This is as Phil's described, yes, there's fifty parking spaces in that across the street, but they um public school uses them. We use thirty or forty of them every single day. So uh that needs to be taken into account as well. Um. That's my comment.
Okay, thank you very much, Mr. Winkler. Uh, we'll, we'll get to, we'll, we'll answer in a second. Is, let me just check and see if there was any other um hands up. And I don't see any. Um, so let me back into this. Um, the first point was there was a mention of changes to the garage. I, the parking calculations won't change, correct? You're talking about some dimensional adjustments or?
No, I mean, there, there's no, no adjustments with the garage. The only thing that we have left to do is uh is um uh work on the fenestration of the west and south side uh with a final e- elevation, but nothing from a, from a spacing standpoint, changes with
Okay, so the facade might, the facade might change, but it's not the uh the actual parking configuration or available spaces or any of that?
The available spaces won't change within the garage. There's a, a waiver will be required because a few of the spaces have a column protruding into the back of them and that lowers, that reduces the, um, you know, the the depth, the length, the depth of it. So the city standard is for a seventeen foot parking space. Uh, the city doesn't have a compact uh
Okay.
standard. So these uh eighteen spaces will still be parking spaces, but they'll be fifteen feet five or fifteen feet six inches rather than the seventeen foot standard.
We'll have to deal with that when when it's formally proposed. Um, really from a parking calculations, all I'm curious about on this, this
Yeah, to answer George's questions, there, there, there aren't eighteen spaces uh being eliminated. There are eighteen spaces that will actually be compact spaces.
Okay.
Uh, you know, rather than standard size spaces.
Jasmine, on the utilities question, I assume, and and I'm not gonna say I assume that there, the seventh condition is in force until all of those utility questions are resolved, correct?
I can, yes. So, well, I I'm gonna say this condition actually was carried over from the last site plan in twenty seventeen. Um, when we first reviewed this, staff noted that fiber optic and so this is more of just a no, hey, we're, we're aware of this.
So I can, I can address that. I've, I've spent about two years dealing with this. Um, so there is a uh a fiber optic line that is a um government communication line uh that parallels C S X. Um, we actually have a physical as built of where um the those lines go. And they, they follow an old line of the the um C S X uh transportation and they cross our footings in two locations. So we've actually already located those in the field. We had our structural engineer bridge those lines and C S X has approved the detail from our structural engineer. We also have to put in two auxiliary conduits uh through those footings. If uh that communication line ever needs to to be changed of any sort, but it's um, it's a single fiber optic line that's in a six inch concrete encased line.
Okay. The the short version, the 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 que- the answer is you, you seem to be having it under control and have accounted for it in the the work. So and we have the condition in play so that we know it's resolved before we move forward with the final site or with the uh construction.
I had to resolve it with C S X before they'll sign on. So that was part.
Um, and then the third, the third comment, I I I don't want to ignore, um, but but the the point about impact to to local businesses. Um, and and I I'll let the commissioners comment on that one way or the other, but um, I I do want to at least leave lay the context that we're not changing on approval. It's already in place. We're, we're talking about extending it and I don't believe that the context in terms of who who the adjacent uses are, what what the adjacent uses are have changed dramatically. There may have been some shifts and the tenants are and what 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 activity is underway, but um the fundamental context and adjacencies and compatibility, I don't, but which is our purview, um, haven't changed um uh materially in the, in the last four years, three years, whatever the first approval was. Um, but commissioners, please, please jump in. Where um I believe we're past, we we don't see other hands up. So um, what I, what I'd like to do is go ahead and um read through the recommendation from staff and then we can go into a discussion.
So staff recommends that the planning commission, based on the exhibits submitted, the staff report, staff findings, applicant's testimony, um, and staff recommendation grant uh SP dash nine zero seven five dash twenty twenty one. Final site plan, finding a conformance with section twenty four dash one seventy of the city zoning, city zoning ordinance with seven conditions.
Okay, great. Thank you. Um, commissioners, any um, any concerns with the uh proposed continuation of approval or reapproval? What are the conditions um in the record? Anybody?
No, you know, I think like I said before, you know, I think, I don't think there's anything that has changed at at the, you know, at the, the high level of what our approval is based on as far as compatibility and and, you know, appropriateness and all those things. I think the only thing that's, that has changed is the the activity on the existing site and, you know, there, there's gonna be impacts that are probably, you know, short term impacts that are greater than they probably were when we did the initial approval, but that's, you know, that's something that the city and and the applicant are gonna have to have to work through to the extent they can. But from, from the lens that we view the project, I, I don't see anything that has changed that would make me say it's no longer compatible or it's no longer appropriate.
Kind of very good. Thank you. Anybody else?
I'll um, I'll, I'll just add that that this building is a long time coming and obviously a critical component of the Old Town Master Plan we've worked on for, you know, twenty years ago and uh uh, and that we've been waiting, waiting, waiting and uh very excited to get it built. Uh, you know, some amount of what I'll call mid rise density has always been the intended um, you know, master plan mass of Old Town. Uh, we um, we've been expecting those sort of feet on the street and a certain level of small town hub density. Um, and we just, we're, we're slowly getting there. Uh, and this, this project is the next component of that. Um, you know, that, that it's not urban, but it's, you know, that kind of small town density is a really critical um component to all retailers, just making this a destination site. Um, you know, to uh to some of our public testimony tonight is, it's true that if there are other suburban sites with more convenient access and loading and parking and other things, but that, that's not what Old Town offers. Old Town is supposed to offer an entire environment of choices, variety and uh sort of eclectic, almost nostalgic, you know, small town, you know, railroad station center. So uh this building becomes a really critical component to that. When, as soon as we get the other four buildings, uh, we'll have a really humming Old Town and everybody will prosper because of it. So.
I would echo what my fellow uh councilman, uh, commission members have stated and also the fact that uh I'm sure the city will help those businesses that will be impacted in the immediate future. But in the long term, a project like this will help, as as Matt said, help spur other businesses along that route and uh become more vibrant neighborhood uh in the long run. So I think for the long term, this is a very positive addition to the city.
Great, I agree. Danny, please.
Yeah, and I guess I'm, I don't know, maybe saying the same thing, but maybe a little different. I did want to to acknowledge what Mr. Winkler said and and not to trivialize what he said. There may be some heartburn, but I think in the long run it's gonna work out. And I, I truly believe that that staff will work to try to come up with a temporary solution or at least to um assuage some of the the issues with with parking that may, that may come up. And I'm sure that Jasmine and staff will, will come up with a creative solution along with, with the applicant.
Excellent. I'd actually take it a step further. You know, I, I think one of the things that that is, is a pretty common sight um in some of the older city centers, town centers that have have done what what Old Town is heading for, which is you know, kind of re revitalized and sort of modernized with the, with the businesses, but but maintain a lot of the, a lot of the um environment, a lot of the the sense of place. Um, is that they've had to be very um overt about things like directional signage to parking um understanding where businesses are when you're at the parking itself, like which way do I go then to go back to where I want to go, you know? I mean, the, the whole idea of directional and wayfinding. I, I know it came up when we did the Old Town Plan and Matt, you said twenty years ago. I can't believe it was that long ago, but um. whenever it was, the, the idea of directional signage of wayfinding in, in a larger sense was, was always part of the, the vision as well. And you know, this might be the, the project that puts this in a vision, really needing to solve for that because, you know, it may be the last relief valve in terms of all that stuff just sort of falling into place naturally. And now we have to figure out a way to make it a little bit more a little bit more usable once, when some of this parking disappears and, and we start really seeing the need to, to park at least, I don't wanna say offsite in a bad way, but, but you know, essentially not right on the lot. So maybe that's something, John, Greg, I'm not sure who, who can do this, but if, if we can put that back up higher on the list of things that maybe from the Old Town Plan needs to be pulled through potentially. We've got some time, it'll take, take a while for the conditions to be resolved and then ultimately for construction to get, get underway and, and for all this to sort of come, come together. But that's a good thing. It might give us some time to figure out this, this scheme and, and what, what might be appropriate. All right. So are there any other comments or concerns? All right. So we have a recommendation from staff to reapprove this with seven conditions. Is there a motion, please?
Chairman, based on the exhibit submitted, the staff reports, their findings, applicant's testimony and staff recommendations, I move that the planning commission grant SP nine oh seven five dash twenty twenty one. Final site plan finding in conformance with section twenty four dash one seventy of the city zoning ordinance with the seven conditions is ready into the record.
Second.
All right, it's been moved and it's been moved. Did I get a, someone jump in there? It's removed and seconded. Fisher Kaufman.
Aye.
Commissioner Wessel.
Aye.
Commissioner Hopkins.
Aye.
And Commissioner Windborn.
Aye.
And, and I will vote aye. So good luck, team. Hopefully this is the year for this to all fall into place. I know you have quite a few things to resolve, but please don't hesitate to keep us posted on how those are going and if, if we need to need to relook at something.
I mean, I appreciate everything. Greg and Jasmine have, have been very, very helpful through this process and, and they know our commitment to get it, getting through all this and we are extremely close. So I'm, I'm very confident that here in the next next twelve months, we'll definitely have a shovel on the ground and a grand opening and a grant or groundbreaking.
Groundbreaking.
Just add thanks to the city attorney's office, economic development and city manager's office. It's been a true across the board effort by the city to get us to this point. So appreciate everyone's efforts in addition to planning staff.
It has, and thank you Scott for recognizing because I know they've worked, worked hard to make all this kind of connect the dots and everything else, right?
Yeah, economic development, we have weekly calls, so they, they, they know. So appreciate that. Thanks, Scott.
All right, very good. Thanks all. And good luck. So that takes us to from the commission. Lloyd, may I start with you tonight?
I just wanna wish everybody a happy Thanksgiving and a safe Thanksgiving in the coming week.
Very appropriate. Commissioner Wessel.
Nothing for me this evening.
Okay, Matt, anything tonight?
No, happy Thanksgiving.
All right, Dan, anything?
It's just one thing. It was funny when, when Lloyd said happy Thanksgiving. My wife is a reading specialist at, at an elementary school and she was asking some of her students, what were they gonna do at Thanksgiving? And they said, I don't know what Thanksgiving is. And, and then one of our students said, well, I'm gonna enjoy Turkey Day. He didn't know it was called Thanksgiving. He thought it was called Turkey Day. So happy Turkey Day to all of you all.
We need to correct that. Ham is okay too. Okay, so let's see. We have a meeting. Oh, what was that?
I was gonna say, not necessarily, ham may not be appropriate.
Good point, yeah. I was thinking of my grandmother who was, who was a big fan of him, but you're right, that maybe isn't appropriate. All right. So I guess now from the staff, Greg, you wanna jump in?
Yeah, I got a couple items for tonight. One, in your packet, you probably saw there was a memo from the environmental affairs committee. And it was related to some comments based off the, the master plan. Water resource element, actually. Obviously, look it over. If you have any questions or concerns or, or any responses, send any questions. You know, feel free to email them to myself or to Rob Robinson and we will get them back to their liaison for any responses that are necessary.
Yeah, actually, that was my question. I meant to ask you when we just did from the commission, I, I read through it. I, I, first of all, I whatever the right channels are, please extend our thanks and appreciation for having thought this through and provided the, provided the insight. Quite frankly, it wasn't something I thought about until I read through it. But I guess is, is there broader scale, whether it's us or the, or the environmental affairs committee or staff, is there an ask in all this? Is there something we need to keep an eye on?
No, my understanding is that they just wanted the commission to be aware for when we do get to that element of the master plan.
Okay, is that on a, is that on the calendar somewhere?
It is not. Right now, obviously, you know, we're, we're, we have teen up transportation and land uses, the next two, you know, big elements to look at and housing actually as well.
Okay.
One, one other sort of question, Greg, you know, reading through this. This, this memo seems to sort of, and some of the recommendations it makes seems to vary very clearly span a couple of different areas, right? There, there's the master plan level topics that impact, you know, planning and development review. But almost everything that they touch on in this memo is also a code issue, you know, aside from, aside from some of the site plan level stuff, it's also directly tied to building code, building performance requirements, you know, green code requirements. So, you know, does, to what extent does implementing some of these things rely on the master plan process? And, and to what extent do some of these things and recommendations, can they be pulled out into parallel processes that frankly have little to do with planning and are, are tied to other, other things like codes and, and standard?
I mean, we can definitely look at that and we can bring those comments to, to their committee. And we can work with our commercial permitting manager as well as our stormwater management division, because I think you're right, a lot of the comments do relate more to, you know, those other chapters of the code that aren't related to chapter twenty four, the zoning ordinance.
Yeah, I, I think there may be an opportunity, knowing where, you know, the industry writ large is going to to frankly accelerate some of these things at a speed that is faster than, than the, you know, time horizons of a master plan.
Yeah, and, and I, I guess the other, the other way to think about it is since it was the catalyst was really the Lake Forest work, you know, that when, when a lot of this discussion kind of emerged again, or at least in one place. As we begin to get into some of the redevelopment plans that will likely come from that, this, this could be another lens to look at some of those, those items specifically, right? I mean, because that would be, no doubt, a, a, a project that, that taken as a whole is gonna have a lot of impact on environmental issues, especially water use. So you know, maybe the idea is maybe keep that in the folder with Lake Forest as well, because that could end up being the first place we see real substantive use of some of these recommendations or at least research for some of the concerns.
We, we can do that.
That, that makes, good, thanks. And, and again, please, please let them know our appreciation for, for, for taking this on.
I will let them know. The other items I have, so the draft twenty twenty two planning commission calendars put in your packet. Again, if any, it's pretty much follows the normal first and third Wednesday of the month for planning commission dates. But if you have any comments on that, let me know. We will probably plan to obviously make that formal in December. And then last I have is full dates to remind you of, the next planning commission meeting is December first. And again, a reminder, that's the only meeting for the planning commission in the month of December. And we do have a joint public hearing scheduled for December sixth, which is on amendments to the APFO related to schools.
Okay.
And that's all I got tonight.
Thanks, Greg. John, how are things in the front office?
They're awesome and good evening, everybody. I did want, I have a few updates tonight. We are working on a new strategic plan. The senior leadership team, which, which includes Tanisha, Dennis, Tom, Lynn and all the department heads had a day long retreat last Tuesday. And we've come up with a new vision for the city, a new mission statement. These are all proposed, of course. They will need to be approved by the mayor council and nine new outcomes. So it's a complete revamp of this strategic plan, which, you know, in my memory, this is, this is all new. So it's, it's kind of exciting and it really, you know, is stimulating a lot of discussion and interaction among all of us at, at the city. Obviously, we have two new council members as of Monday and we're excited about that. Orientation happened yesterday, preliminary orientation, I should say. There was also gonna be a series of workshops that are planned for various topics, including the development review process, which we're shooting for December second at six thirty PM. Not confirmed yet, but you know, obviously it's not mandatory that you all attend, but it will be open to the public. And, and we'll make sure you know when, when it gets out there. Also, we are in the twenty fiscal year twenty three budget process right now. And tonight I submitted a enhancement. Enhancements to the budget are a new thing, but they are, you know, things in the budget that are different from prior years and the enhancement that I submitted tonight was a comprehensive rewrite of our zoning code, getting a consultant to do that for us. And so hopefully that will be approved and that will be a major initiative for twenty twenty three, which starts obviously July first.
Don't ever change the number twenty four one seventy, because I'm so used to referring to that. Those, those things have to stay twenty four one seventy and one seventy one, or we're just gonna be.
That's great, John.
All right. Oh, was that it? I'm sorry. Did I, did I cut you off?
That is it. That is it for me tonight.
Thanks, John. All right, Frank, thanks for joining us. Any, any news from, from your side of the city hall?
No, nothing, nothing more. Certainly glad to see, I know some folks would be very glad to see the reapproval for three fifteen East, East Diamond, because that has been an ongoing project partly with my office as well. And otherwise, I would, I would just join everybody in saying Thanksgiving to everybody.
Thanks, Frank.
Turkey Day.
All right. So if there's nothing else, have a good evening, enjoy the, the upcoming holidays and we're adjourned.